All right, it is December 1st. Welcome to Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. Councilwoman Madeline Skels-Harris has our prayer and our pledge. Madeline.
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow our heads, please? Your heavenly Father, we just come to you just as humble as we know how, just to say thank you, Lord, and not take our thank yous for granted like being here, being able to dress ourselves, food, shelter, clothes. Lord, we thank you for all the things, and we ask your forgiveness for being so unworthy, but yet still your grace and your mercy, Lord, allows us to do things in your name. And Lord, we ask that you protect, we thank you for protecting us through the holiday and allowing us to be with our family, to have good fellowship and to love on one another, Lord, and for traveling grace, Lord. We thank you so much for that. We thank you for this great community that we live in, Lord. A lot of things are happening, but when it comes to Murfreesboro, a lot of things don't happen, and we thank you for that. We thank you for your protection. We thank you for protection over our fire and police as they go out, Lord, unknowing what they're going to encounter, but you dispense angels around them, Lord, in order to protect themselves and our city. And Lord, we thank you for all our employees, for all our teachers, the staff of our teachers. We just cannot thank you enough for protecting our children. And Lord, as we prepare to handle the business of the city, you said that you would be in the midst of us, so we ask right now that you move in the midst of us. And Lord, we ask your special comforting on people in our staff that have lost loved ones, Lord, we ask that you give them the comfort and the peace that no one else can give like you. And as we get ready to protect our meeting, we ask you to move in the center, Lord, and give us direction. This is our prayer we ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have nothing on the consent agenda tonight. We have no minutes to vote on, so we'll move into new business. That's a first.
Yeah.
We have a professional services contract. Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I stand before you to request approval for the professional service contract with Johnson and Bailey Architects in the amount of $128,751. The contract is for the design and renovation plans for ceilings at Hopgood and Milton Nelson Elementary School. The original ceilings at Hopgood and Milton Nelson were covered by a drop-down ceiling in the past. The scope of the work for this project is to remove the existing drop-down ceiling to gain access to the old above ceiling for removal to bring schools up today's standards and rectify other major issues that we have. Given the degree of the construction and the disruption of the existing asbestos materials, work is projected during the next summer break when schools are vacant. The construction renovation contract for each school will be bid separately in phase to ensure school can return to normal in the fall. Renovating the schools' ceilings will continue to maintain a safe and healthy environment for the students and staff. The cost for this contract is funded through county shared bond proceeds. I thank you for your time and can take any questions at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Jellie. All right, we have the fountains at the gateway, Phase Two. Mr. Tindall.
This is approval for the documentation to begin closing on the Phase Two of the fountains. If most of council will remember, or a lot of council will remember, that it was two phases. Phase One's been developed for quite some time and has now been quite successful. The efforts of Mr. Gravy, I think, is here tonight, and he's preparing to do Phase Two in accordance with the agreement that council's provided to him, the development agreement. So with council's approval, the documents will be prepared and we'll execute those appropriately so that he can begin to work on Phase Two. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Second. Motion to second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have the appointment of the Committee on Contributions for the Board of Trustees in the Community Investment Trust. Mr. Tindall.
Yep. This is the second set of appointments. You recall that we appointed the Board of Trustees last week, week before, can't remember, recently. And under the trust agreement, there is a committee on contributions that will provide recommendations to the board on distributions for charitable contributions and that type of activity, which is part of the set aside on the allocation each year of dispersments from the trust agreement. So there are 10 individuals listed right now. The agreement, the trust agreement allows from five to nine, so we'll need to go to nine or alternative.
Mr. Mayor, how, Mr. Tindall, how complicated is to move that number from nine to 10 since there are 10 candidates?
Well, the, go ahead.
I would need to double check, but it might be in the charter amendment.
Yeah, I did check the charter amendment, and the committee's not actually in the charter amendment. I think it was, it's created under the trust agreement. I couldn't find anything in there. Yep, it's under the charter amendment. Obviously, it'd be more difficult, but if it's not, then it's in the trust agreement. The trust agreement has not yet been signed because we haven't met with the Board of Trustees yet, and until we meet with the Board of Trustees, that document can be modified. And this is a committee that provides recommendations. It's not an action committee, so the fact that there's an even number is not, doesn't really present a problem at all. It can, it can operate just as well with, with an even number.
I realize if it's a charter, it would require, going back to legislature, I assume, is that correct?
Yeah.
Makes it more complicated.
It makes it a little bit more complicated. What we can do is, if we table this for a few minutes, Mr. Tucker can pull up the charter, or I can pull it up.
Is there a time constraint to where the committee has to meet? I wanted to say, I seem to recall February will be the first time they meet.
Well, February is when, under the agreement, that they would make their recommendations so that the board can make recommendations accounting in time for the budget. So with the composition of the board just now, it's unlikely that we're going to meet the deadlines for next year for allocating the money. It probably is going to be the following year when we do that, so next year, we'll take that time to put the, put the board together and the committee together. There's several steps, and there's several funding, and then they have to determine how they're going to invest the money and who's going to invest it. So there's, there's quite a process left to go, and I don't think we're going to hit the deadlines for this budget year, probably the next budget year.
Could we just table this then, or?
Table it for a few minutes, we'll come back to it, and we can.
Back. Is that okay?
What would the council like to do?
I think Mr. Shacklet's wanting to table it till the next meeting.
No.
No, just for.
I was just saying, just why he's looking, if, because the issue of it, if it's in that document.
It won't take me very long, so if you want to.
All right, let's move that, we'll move that down to the.
Bottom of the agenda.
Move it to.
We'll move number three to number 11, or 11A now.
Right.
All right, Wellness Service Agreement, Employee Services. Randolph.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. If you recall, in September of this year, the council approved for the city to move forward with a new organization to provide wellness services to our employees starting in January. However, the agreement failed through, during negotiations, once we discovered that it could not provide the level of service that we needed. Therefore, after reviewing the RFCSP process that was conducted earlier during the year, staff now recommends using Wellsport Health Incorporated for wellness reward services for our employees. The wellness reward services empower employees with health, education, and lifestyle skills that enable them to achieve the best possible health. The expense of the program is in line with the budget. The expenses are stable over the next two years. The cost for the, for year two is $48,468, and year three would be almost $52,000. The total expense over the three-year agreement is almost $150,000. Staff is requesting your approval to accept their agreement with Wellsport.
So moved.
Wait, I have a question.
Yep.
Motion to second.
I have just one question, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
That's okay. With this company, what is something special that they offer, or some, one good benefit that they offer?
They offer our ability to track all the activities that employees do outside of work, such as if they attend a eye exam, a biometric screening, mammograms, and things of that nature. They can track that information much better than the current company that we're currently using.
I wasn't asking the question because I was against it, I just was wondering, what do they offer?
Oh, okay.
That sounds good.
Do they track if I work out?
Uh, yes, they do.
Great.
But you have to report it, of course.
Countable.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion to second. Good question, Madeline. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we also have the stop-loss insurance agreement.
Yes. An invitation for bids was issued by the city for stop-loss insurance coverage. Stop-loss insurance provides coverage for claims above a certain amount of money made to the city's self-funded insurance retention program. The city received one bid, which was from Blue Rea of Tennessee, and we accepted the bid. The insurance covers the insurance fund for individual claims above $150,000 and $200,000 aggregated in Pacific Deductibles. The estimated total cost is $894,734, which is almost $9,000 less than the recurrent contract we have today. The costs will be funded by the insurance fund. Staff is requesting your approval to accept this contract agreement with Blue Rea of Tennessee. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Do we see a trend where we are getting more claims that is reaching this percentage that we're going up?
Well, actually, it's going down.
Okay.
The contract agreement we're signing now, that we accept, we're looking to accept, is less than what we're currently paying. We've been doing business with this company for many years. They're looking at our trend. For this past year, it went down.
Okay.
But it kind of goes up and down, depends on, you know, a person's health.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randolph. All right, we have the use of competitive self-proposals for banking services for the city of Murfreesboro.
This is, state law requires periodic evaluation of banking services. The use of the RFCSP process allows us to request and evaluate proposals from qualifying banks to provide banking services for the city. We're requesting council approve this process.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to Transportation Investment Report, Last Castas Highway Widening. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. On August 30th of this year, staff met with TDOT to discuss a partnership for the widening of Last Castas Highway from Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Clark Boulevard, to Copley Road. To start this process, TDOT recommended developing a tier for this project. Staff requested a proposal from Cordino Group for the development and completion of this report. This study will determine the benefit and financial investment associated with the improvements of Last Castas Highway from two lanes to five lanes, as outlined in the 2040 Major Transportation Plan. This expenditure of $98,200 is funded from the proceeds of Murfreesboro Electric Department, and staff recommends approval of the contract with the Cordino Group in the amount of $98,200, subject to legal department final review. I'm available for any questions.
Did you say completion 2040?
No, ma'am, this is based off the 2040 major transportation.
I mean, completion probably would be 2040.
Well, we're hoping that instead of it being a marathon, maybe we'll make it a half marathon.
Okay. 2030?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have the Transportation Investment Report for Oakfort Parkway.
Thank you. Again, we met with TDOT staff, and they recommended this being the first step in moving this project forward. Staff requested a proposal from Kimley Horn for the development and completion of this report. This study would determine the benefit and financial investments associated with the improvement of Oakfort Parkway from four lanes to six lanes, as outlined in our 2040 Major Transportation Plan. Due to the number of singleized intersections, this, this tier is a little bit more labor-intensive. As a result, has a larger budget compared to similar projects. This expenditure of $129,400 is funded through the proceeds of the Murfreesboro Electric Department. Staff recommends approval of this contract with Kimley Horn in the amount of $129,400, subject to city attorney approval. And I'd also like to mention that we'll probably be bringing one more after the first year for Memorial Boulevard. I'm available for any questions.
I just have a question. It's just for my own information. What determines the company that does the tier? Kimley Horn?
Well, Kimley Horn has done some work on Oakfort Parkway through the Smart Corridor Project.
Okay.
And they have a lot of knowledge within that area.
Because of the intersections, the numbers of intersections?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wondered, because there were two different companies that were being proposed.
Well, we're trying to split the work out as well to get things done quickly.
I understand that, too. Thank you. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Kerr, is there any chance that TDOT can do more than one project at a time?
That's what we're pushing. That's why we're doing, moving these along.
I know they like to spread the peanut butter evenly, so to speak, in each county, but more bigger, faster.
We're, we're pushing that.
We agree. Amen.
And it may be, it may be a situation where maybe we could manage one of them.
So I'll take it your team creamy, then.
All right, we have a motion to second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Mr. Kerr, before you leave, we had a meeting one day last week, and Mayor Carr came in, Pettish Reed, the commissioner for the Highway 99 area, was there, but do you mind talking about the 99 corridor quickly, and then where we are on Phase Two, Phase Three, and then that next section of what would be Phase Four?
Well, I could, I can speak to that. Currently, Phase Two is the project that is under construction at this point in time. It's looking as though that they were originally scheduled to have that phase completed September of next year. Due to material supply issues, that is going to be pushed probably till the spring of TDOT has on their schedule for Phase Three.
Phase Three is from?
Phase Three is from, is from Casey Lane out to Veterans Parkway. It is currently in their schedule to be let to construction in the December letting of 2023. Now, the Phase Three B is, I think what you called it, Mayor?
Yes.
Would be from, basically from Veterans Parkway out to Rockvale School area, but we haven't really had any conversations with, with TDOT about that at this point in time. That was just brought up in our meeting.
Right.
So I don't know really what to give you on that. I just know that in order to extend that, that project, that distance, there would be some, it'd be time associated with environmental documents, utilities, potential right-of-way issues, so it may be better to actually divide that and have it as a separate phase from Phase Three.
At our next December meeting, would you mind, a lot of the emails that we get as council members routinely are about road projects and updates, like I got an email about Bradyville Pike.
I'll be coming next week on that one.
Okay. When you come next week, do you mind maybe getting with Mr. Gore and y'all doing a PowerPoint presentation that just sort of shows us?
As long as he develops it, that'd be great.
I think it'd be great, just on those major road projects, that you let us have something that we can push out to people that shows, here's where this road project is, here's when it's scheduled for completion, so that way it'd help us to be able to get that information out.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
That'd be great. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. All right, we have the Rollins Contract for Brush and Limb Connection, Solid Waste. Russell.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and council. Before you, is a request to approve to enter into a contract with Rollins for Brush and Limb Collection. Our current contract with Brush and Limb Collection with RecPro ends on January 8th, 2023. Bids were received for this service on November 8th of '22, and Rollins Excavating, doing business as RecPro, was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder at $1,456,800. This contract is for one year with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods per mutual agreement between the city and the contractor. Should the city exercise this option to renewal, the contract as renewed shall be valid for one year, not to exceed three years total. This contract totals $1,456,800, which is on a, excuse me, calendar year basis. The impact to the FY '23 budget is approximately $1.3 million. The remaining $105,000 will be covered by a future budget amendment, and I am available for any questions.
I don't have any questions. I kind of want to just kind of make a general comment here to the rest of the council before I do make a motion to approve it. You know, obviously, you know, this sticker contracts over $1.4 million a year in taxpayer dollars. And, you know, I was excited to see that we had two bids, one being a competitive bid that was lower, but was ultimately disqualified due to what he referenced there, not having the responsive or responsible type of bid in terms of business references and the equipment capacity. While there's a lower bid on paper, in the end, you know, we have to ask, you know, can the lower bid really do the job? And I hate that the lower bid was not responsive in terms of their bid due to disqualification for lack of references. I guess what I'm saying is, is I'm saying this really, really for any entity that's wishing to do business with the city. You know, we want them to do business, we want them to pursue this. It's good for the city to have two competitive bids, because it really makes our current contractors, you know, look at what we're getting, and also, it's just good. Competition is good. Competition makes the bid process competitive, so, you know, if you're a small business out there and getting ready to start out, you know, get that experience, come to the city, have a responsive bid, and hopefully, it'll be responsive and responsible, because I do think competition is good. Other than that, you know, I'll make a motion that we should approve this bid.
Second.
Let me ask one question, and this, I'm not trying to, I just, I must have missed something. Fiscal impact in the statement there, it says the remaining $105,000. There's more, that number doesn't jive with the?
So the contract is on a calendar year?
Okay, so it's a piece of a year?
Right. So there was an increase from, from the previous contract that we held.
Okay.
So that increase for the six months is the $105,000.
Is the $105,000?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I was trying to get that to number to balance, and it didn't, and so I thought, well.
For our new, for our new council members, about four years ago, is that right, Mr. Gore? We, we were getting lots and lots of feedback that we were not able to keep up with brush pickup, and so the council made the decision to really put the city in quadrants, and, because we couldn't handle it, especially at peak seasons, when, when, in the spring and in the fall. And so we did a partnership, and I, you know, we were all skeptical about how much that that cost, but our brush and limb complaints have gone significantly down. As a matter of fact, I can't remember the last time we got, I got a brush and limb complaint. So what we did, I think, worked. It did cost more money, but it was able to be able to provide that service. I think the main issue right now with just on our knuckle boom trucks, how long is it taking us to get a knuckle boom truck right now?
Yeah, so it's over 24 months to get a knuckle boom truck in. I was up here just a few months ago to change stuff around again, just to get one sooner, so.
All right, you have a motion to second. Ms. Brown.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Russell. All right, we have Salem-Barfield Sewer Improvements Award of a Contract.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. What, this item before you is a construction contract for the Salem-Barfield Sewer Improvements that allows new sanitary sewer connections along the Salem Highway Corridor. If you recall, back in December of 2021, we restricted any new sewer connections in this basin due to capacity concerns and the fact that we envisioned or saw overflows occurring if we continued to allow those new connections. So we spent the last year identifying the bottlenecks and replacement, enlarging certain line sizes, relocating certain gravity sewer sections. So you can kind of see we've, the various linear footages here, and we have a total bid price of eight, for this component, this is kind of, there's three components to this bid, but for this component, it's $8,389,949, and that gives us the ability to make 3,724 new sewer connections. So we are going to be coming forward with you in the future to recommend recouping this component of the bid through a new Salem-Barfield Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District. The other two components of the project, there was some 15-inch, it's a bottleneck of a 15-inch gravity sewer that we need to enlarge to 24-inch. We felt like this was really part of the overall system upgrades, that this particular funding should come from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and not be recouped through a special assessment district. It does have to cross underneath the West Fork Stones River. This is a $3,684,159 component of the project. The last component is to replace 36-inch sewer under Salem Highway. That's a $1,637,864 price tag. So we're, we had two bids. We are recommending award for clear construction in the amount, total amount of $13,936,972, We are recommending award for clear construction in the amount, total amount of $13,936,972. And again, anticipate bringing you back a special sewer, sanitary sewer assessment district to recoup approximately 8.3 million of that cost. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Gore?
If no, no move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 11, solid waste management, Waste Away Project Agreement.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Council. This was a directive after the October workshop to try to pull together a project agreement with Waste Away based on the multi-criteria analysis report that we presented during that meeting. I want to go through various elements of the project where I say where this project works. The technology, there's always been some concern that the technology is suspect, but I wanted to go back and remind the council that this is an R&amp;D winner, a winner of U.S. Army Research product, has 23 U.S. and international patents. They have a five-years continuous operation facility in Morrison. I brought the 2019 Tetra Tech report that I have tagged and flagged, and it has done an independent review of their process as far as the technical feasibility and the confirmation of viability. Be happy to let y'all go through that if you ever want to. I'm calling this a 2019 game changer. This is right just before COVID, so I still think there's, there's some, the legs hasn't, haven't really got underneath them on this, but the EPA provided a, a letter that concluded that this was a non-hazardous secondary material, a non-waste fuel, and it was basically a coal or wood replacement. TDEC also sees this product as a soil amendment. So, there was, there was significant testing of this SE3 fuel using a mass spectrometer, and TDEC actually doesn't even require it to be tested any longer because it continues to pass all of the contaminant parameters. We went through, this is kind of a highlight of the MCA, you know, on the, on the diversion out of county trash and traffic and public perception, the Waste Away process scored the highest compared to all the alternatives, which would be a clean MRF materials recovery facility, a dirty materials recovery facility, or transferring to another landfill. The project, I want to go kind of through the project agreement components. One is a material management station, also known as a transfer station. We're not calling it a transfer station because of some federal rebate, tax rebates that are available or direct payback in case of the municipality. Then there's three other components to the, to the project. One is the manufacturing of the fuel. There's an anaerobic reactor biogas generation component, and then there's a renewable natural gas purification component. What we're looking at from a public financing component is just the transfer station component or the MMS, and we're looking at revenue-based financing on the other three components of the, of the project. So, we've talked, or we've, we've got a working draft with the county to look at an interlocal agreement just on the, on the material management station component of the project that we're proposing, and it hasn't been finalized, and there's probably still a lot of work to go, but it proposes a 50-50 split on the construction of that MMS. So, the business case, the Waste Away business case, we're showing that is working. We've kind of talked about the RINs, it's Renewable Identification Number, and you create renewable natural gas through the, through, using the feedstock of, of the Waste Away product. So, you get 11.7 times the cost of ethanol, $27.10. That's a pretty big bang for the buck per MMBTU. The fuels, you actually get to sell the fuel as well for the price of natural gas, so that's another $3.50. One of the things we haven't factored into the pro forma is a California Low Carbon Fuel Standard credit. That has significant potential if we run a pipeline over to some high-pressure gas mains that are about a mile from our current site. I want to talk a little bit about the, the, where the market is going on renewable natural gas. There is a Renewable Natural Gas Incentive Act of 2022 that's under congressional consideration. It's a Senate bill that's out there right now. Arkea and Republic are looking at investing 1.1 billion in 39 RNG projects for commissioning in 2027. BlackRock acquired Vanguard Renewables, and they're intending to commission 100 anaerobic reactors producing renewable natural gas by 2026, also a billion dollars in financing. I guess my point here being is that renewable natural gas is being incentivized federally, and a lot of private sector companies are going after that, that federal subsidies. From the business case perspective, this is, the horizontal axis is the municipal solid waste tonnage per year and tipping fees. If, I, I do this on a graduated scale showing if Murfreesboro, which generates about 50,000 tons per year, were to use a Waste Away facility, that adds about $106 per ton for tipping fees. We currently charge $7.50 per month. We need to be charging $15 a month. If we were charged $106 per ton for our processing of our waste, that would add $10.60 to that, so that would be roughly a $20, $25.60 total. If we get $75,000, $75,000 tons per year through the process, that drops it to $66 per ton and only a $6.60 per customer per month. And that's, that's to create a full recovery. That's not to say that you guys, we're going to charge that to the citizens. I'm just saying this is, if we wanted to recover 100% of the costs, this is what it would take. If Murfreesboro and Rutherford County were to go together at $100,000, $100,000 tons per year, that's $46.50 per ton, which would be a $4.65 increase per customer per month. And at full capacity, which is 140,000 tons per year, that's 400 tons per day, that would only add about $3 per customer per month, and the tipping fee would be about $29.50. To put this in perspective, these are, these lines that I show up here are kind of the market rates between $65 and $75 per ton. That's what you're paying at different county transfer stations. So, you can see, once we get to that 75,000 per ton year, tons per year, we get well into that lower range of a market rate for a tipping fee. The revenue-based financing, real quick, revenue bonds are backed by the project revenues. So, unlike general obligation bonds that are backed by dedicated city taxes, this is a financing option that, there's nonrecourse financing options that if the revenue stream dries up or if payments of the bonds are not paid, the bondholder does not have a claim against the city's general fund. So, we can also structure the deal where, if anything does happen to the Waste Away process or the anaerobic renewable natural gas process, that the ownership is retained by the city and/or county to continue operating as a transfer station. So, that's where we talk about the MMS, the 50-50 split, the other components are what we're talking about, revenue bonds through investors for the SE3M and the ARBG and RNGP. Those are those other three components. We're talking about municipal-operated component of the MMS and a contract-operated component for the, for the remaining of the process to convert the garbage to fuel and to renewable natural gas. This is the, the timing incentive and why there's a little bit of, a little sense of urgency here is that this Inflation Reduction Act and the investment tax credit, this extends to qualified facilities that begin, have to begin construction prior to January 1, 2025. For tax-exempt finance projects, it's a 25.5% rebate. And the act allows tax credit recipients to monetize those credits via direct pay, so the city could get a 25.5% check for the total project cost back to us. What does that look, so, so the timing works. If, if the MMS needs to be in operation before January 2025, that seems to be the new deadline, that at least some of the county folks are saying that they see Middle Point closing. I've always been kind of operating off mid-2027, but they're seeing activity out there that leads them to believe that it'll be closed by 2025. That's not on any reporting, that's not been, Republic has not stated that. That is really a county observation. The qualified biogas property needs to be under construction by 2025 to get the 25.5% federal energy credit rebate. And in order to really make that happen, the project agreement that we have here in front of you and the design fee, we really need to get that approved so that that design and construction can start. So, that, that investment tax credit, that's a 16, about a $16.6 million rebate. If you look at a $15 million MMS, it drops it to 11.2 million with the federal rebate. The remaining components are 50 million, that gets reduced down to 37 and a quarter, 37.25 million with the 25.5% federal rebate. So, we're recommending that we move forward with the project agreement in the $2.5 million committed to planning and designing the qualified biogas property to be built at 2120 Butler Drive. It incorporates the materials management station, which is needed prior to anticipation of Middle Point's closure by 2025. So, I'm open for questions and comments.
All right, I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Last meeting, we talked about how the transfer station would be in need no matter what, but what are the taxpayers at risk for if Waste Away doesn't work?
Well, that's where we're talking about that revenue-based financing. If we, if we go through that nonrecourse financing and do that through revenue bonds, I'm saying that that would be through, that would be investors that would not have a, a, the ability to call on the city's taxes. So, they, that, that general, the, it would not be a GO bond, it would be a revenue bond that would not have the ability to hit the, the city's, I guess, general fund.
Thank you. I just wanted you to voice it just like that.
Okay, thank you.
This seems to be the way of the land now. In a couple of years, I think this Waste Away is going to be the thing. I noticed when I was getting ready tonight on TV, have you ever heard of Lomi?
Lomi, I'm afraid I have not.
I was getting ready, and they showed this commercial where this compact little gadget, and they were putting their trash in that, and they pushed a button, and then, after so long, they opened it up and they poured, looked like dirt out, and they started putting it on their flowers in the house. And so, I said, this, this is what you're going to present tonight, other than yours is gigantic. But, I mean, but they are advertising that on Amazon for $499, this gadget. So, I was just thinking, seems like that's the way of the land. It's, it's getting ready to happen in a lot of places.
There, there's a lot of soluble organ, if you think about all the food waste you put into your garbage, that is soluble organic material that these, quite honestly, it's the microbiological bugs use that as food to generate this gas that can be further refined to renewable natural gas. The reason the renewable natural gas is so, being subsidized to the, so much is because of the federal government's desire for us to get off of fossil fuels. So, there's just more and more incentives, even through that 2022 Renewable Natural Gas Incentive Act that's coming forward. It's a lot of, you're right, there's a lot of incentive, incentivization to, to create this renewable natural gas.
In fact, in that commercial, they were actually putting some watermelon in there.
Well, that's probably compost, yeah, they're probably wanting you to put your food waste into that, and I doubt they want you to put other cans or plastics in there.
Right, but look it up, Lomi.
I'll do it, thank you.
No other questions?
Go ahead.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gore, I want to just publicly, I mean, this has been a work in process for a long time, and I know you have broken this down to where we can understand it outside of the technical side, and I've even, over the last several days, taken your PowerPoint that you did for the council, sort of explaining the whole process, and I've been able to give that out to citizens who are asking, and several people have responded back saying, "Thank you, this makes it so much easier to understand." And so, you and your team have worked really hard, hopefully to take us into the next step, and thank you, we couldn't, we couldn't have made it this far without you.
Well, and I, and I appreciate that, and I do want to give kudos to Waste Away and Griggs and Maloney. They've been very forthright and forthcoming with any information I've asked of them, and there's still a lot of work to be done. We're, this really is just the tip of the iceberg. There's going to, there's going to be a lot more material, and I'll try to create it in a, present it in a way that it's, it's easily digested.
Digested, yeah, I mean, that's a good...
I guess that's a little bit of a pun, so, thank you very much.
Good pun, Darren. All right, we need to move back to item three, Appointment of the Committee on Contributions for the Board of Trustees of the Community Investment Trust. Mr. Tucker.
Sure, just a few points of clarification. In general, Craig was correct, the charter amendment references a committee that makes recommendation and contributions, does not set the number, unlike the Board of Trustees, the charter amendment does not set the number of members that are on that advisory committee on charitable contributions. We will, to comply with the charter amendment, we will need to go back and establish that committee by ordinance. It's also in the trust agreement, but I don't, we can do that and present those to you together. I don't see any problem with moving forward with, if you, if you want to make, if you want, if it's council's wish to, to establish it at 10, you can do that, approve this, this slate of candidates.
So, would you, would you need a motion to change it to 10?
No.
Okay.
Nope, you can just say these, we're, approving this slate of candidates, and then we can, when we present the ordinance in the trust agreement, we can either say that it's at 10 or it's a range of like 7 to 11 or something like that, so 10 is in that.
My personal thoughts, boards and committees always work better without numbers.
I agree, and I, I think not even nine is, is a lot of people. I think I was eyeing seven, maybe, a little bit more manageable number. If anybody else has thoughts on that?
I'm okay with nine, just because you have more of a diversity in thought, but I, I don't want an even number because you could end up, in theory, in a tie.
Yeah.
So, it's nine, seven, five, whatever it is.
I will say, we don't have many boards that are nine or 10 people.
Yeah.
For, for that reason, just because it is pretty hard, but we typically don't have 10 people sign up to be on a board either, so.
How many do we have on the?
Seven.
Seven. Let's just make it seven. Do you make a motion?
I don't think you need a...
I think you would, well, I think if you're, if you're going to vote through, if you're going to eliminate people on this list, I think make a motion to reduce it to seven and then establish it at seven and then move that way.
Then two people that need to be removed that's on there, right?
Three.
Three people.
But it was initially nine, so I don't, I don't have a problem with it being nine. I don't...
What do you mean initially nine?
Well, it, it's only, it's stated in the, I actually think in the draft trust agreement that would be an agreement between the Board of Trustees and the, and the city, is that it is a range either between seven and nine or five and nine. I can't, is it five and nine?
Five to nine.
Yeah, so.
So, what criteria would, would we use to eliminate the people already?
There was, there is criteria that was drafted in the, in the trust agreement, and I think that was stated in the applications in terms of type of, you know, their experience working in the community in various sectors of the community, their experience with charities, foundations, and things like that.
Right, I understand that, but I'm just saying, we already have, and I'm not, I'm just saying, we already have that number in these people, and I'm not saying keep it, but if we do eliminate them, someone, the criteria, it's the same criteria that put them on the board, so, you know, how do we take them off? That's all, we just need to look closely at that, how we remove people.
I'm okay with nine as a number, honestly.
Well, there's no, there's no board yet, so not removing them.
No, what I'm saying, recommendation. I knew you all were going to correct me on that, but, yeah, I understand.
So, just write down one name?
Yeah, we need to make sure everybody is wanting, I mean...
Let me, let me state my thought for having 10 people on there, and then y'all can say that's garbage.
No.
Y'all can say no. That's fine, but my thought is, this is a little bit different committee than we've ever, we're, we're looking for people with a broad experience and a reach into our community that have experience and perspective that they can add to making a recommendation. That's what they will do, is make a recommendation back to us prior to our budget process as to what should be done. So, I don't see having, the difference between nine and 10, having that extra person's perspective makes, you know, profoundly difficult for them to come to some conclusions. I think just more input in this process. So, I, you know, and it's a different kind of committee than, say, our Parks and Rec and our, you know, the other committees that we serve on that have to vote on that. It's a little bit different perspective. From my perspective, this is, you know, having people with a, a, a reach into our community, and one extra person doesn't make, to me, that significant difference, and I would rather have that additional voice than, than to say, "Okay, we're going to eliminate somebody to be off." These people offer themselves to serve on this committee, and, and I don't know if you've looked at the qualifications, I don't know who you're going to kick off, who you're going to say doesn't deserve to be on here. They all deserve to be on there. It's going to be an arbitrary pick as to somebody that just doesn't serve on there. And I, I think this kind of thing, community involvement is an important...
My question is, okay, if we say we're going to put 10, if there's a tie, how is the tiebreaker going to?
Well, that's not necessarily, they would come to a recommendation. I don't think you're going to get that kind of, if that becomes... you're going to get that kind of, if that becomes a problem, I mean.
No, I was just throwing that out there, if they ever come up with something and half of them agree and half don't, what would be the, because who's going to be the tiebreaker? That's all.
I think the tiebreaker would actually be the Board of Trustees, because, you know, if, if, there's only a certain amount, there'll be a set amount of money that the Board of Trustees can distribute each year.
Certain percent.
And so, so if there is a recommendation for, that there's, that there, that there's a tie on some, you know, organization, that would, that, my legal recommendation to that advisory committee would be just present it all, and the Board of Trustees would make the decision.
But I, I want to make sure with something Bill said, that, that the funding recommendations go to the Board of Trustees.
That's correct, that was.
They, they don't come to us to, so we don't approve.
We get a veto though, right?
I don't think, can we? Well, the, the, it's part of the budget process, because isn't, isn't that part of our budget?
That, that's how it was in the past, and here it's the vote, the vote on the distributions is going to be by the Board of Trustees.
Well, then. Yeah, but. The reason why, Bill, is I think when we were going through, we wanted to take, the discussion was that we didn't want to pick winners, and we didn't want the council to be picking winners and losers, and so the, the recommendation from the community, the community group goes to the Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees will determine, I think whether, really the Board of Trustees, the way that trust agreement's set up, it, they will look at whether they are in the parameter with the money that they have allocated. It's not even, the Board of Trustees does not get veto power on who they're giving the money to. It's, it's just they, is this the amount that we, we've allowed them to spend?
And, and there's certain legal parameters about the types of groups that can receive the money, and you have, you know, the, the Committee on Contributions is designed to kind of help set priorities within the community as to who would receive it, but it's, you know, it's ultimately going to be the Board of Trustees' decision to, to vote on that. But the principle, the, your principal point that it's an advisory committee is correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Adam, if, if I may, I, I really, I think this committee is going to serve a really important role, even though it is just advisory, and as a business owner, I think every meeting should be small enough to split a pizza, that is, that's my rule of thumb, so I'm going to make a motion that we limit the committee, this advisory committee, to seven members. That's my motion.
All right.
Ooh. So we have, I mean, you'll do now?
I think it ought to be nine, because it says five to nine, and that's what's in black and white.
Then why don't we make it five?
Well.
Love you.
Five, five to nine is simply what's in a, in a draft document.
Right.
That, that has not been voted on by city council.
I'm just saying, nine is better than five, because you bring in more diversity of thought and ideas. That's, that's my angle and thought.
All right, I'm.
And I'm not buying pizza, either.
I'll pay for the pizza.
All right, I'll, let's call the roll.
What, hold on, what are we voting on, I'm sorry?
To make it seven-member committee. So Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
No.
Mr. Maxwell?
No.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
No.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, seven it is, let's pick three. Do you have paper?
Still new at this, are we writing down the three we don't?
We're going to write the three that we, yeah.
Three that we're taking off?
Correct.
I need a piece of paper.
We don't have time to think about it, we're just going to do it tonight, right? Can we, do we have to vote on it tonight? Because I want to look at them and see their qualifications again and see, I mean, I just don't want to look at it tonight and pick three people. Can we vote on this the next meeting?
I, I mean, there's no rush if we want to do it in the next.
Because I want to review the people, I don't want to just sit and take three off tonight and not really looking at their.
Is everybody okay just doing it in the next meeting?
I would just say a motion to defer it until the next regular council meeting.
I think that makes, I mean, we, we've decided on seven, so take the time to decide what seven to us.
But let's make sure that it's going to be seven of the ten applicants that we have. We're not making, we're not taking any more, any more applications.
Right.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to defer?
So move.
Motion in a double second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, you have two recommendations to the Parks and Recreation Commission. I do want to say one thing with, we have, Angela, to make sure I'm right with this, the, the Greenway Commission or Committee has, is no longer, correct?
The Greenway Committee has not met in some time, I don't think there have been any actions to officially dissolve it.
Yep.
But it has not met in a while, and the Parks and Recreation Commission has taken action in regards to Greenway.
Yeah, and so I, I wanted to preface by saying, we really didn't have any outstanding applications except for Carl Montgomery, but Kent Siler has been the chair of the Greenway Commission for years, and Kent has helped tremendously with federal funding, with the Corps of Engineers for Greenway Extensions. So it was a logical progression, since he chaired the Greenway Committee, and that one doesn't meet for him to go on to the, to the Parks and Recreation Commission to continue helping expand the, the trail system. So that, that's, that's why you'll see his name on there.
That's good.
So move.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
And that's not just why Kent's on there, I should say, Kent will be a valuable member in the commission, so we're not just putting him on there to get money. Just want to make sure, but that's a big reason, Kent, if you're watching this.
I know he is.
All right, you have a few license, licenses, licenses in front of you?
We have a regular beer permit for catering at 906 Regently Road, and a special event permit for a VFW Stones River fundraising event on December 10th. Both applicants have met requirements for beer permits and are recommended for approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
And I want to make sure, as Ms. Tig is not even here, and she is texting me from, I assume from her home, Kenya, it's, it's Charlie Montgomery who we voted on, Carl is the brother, Charlie and Carl, so it's Charlie that we, that had applied for the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Even when she's not here, she calls you out.
I know, it's right here, so, yeah, she just said it's Charlie, not Carl, so, anyway. All right, so it's Charlie that we appointed. All right, any other statements that need to be paid?
No.
All right, any other business for the council?
Mayor McFarland, Mr. Tindall gave his regrets for leaving early, but we will be meeting on December the eighth, we do have public hearings that night, and then we're also planning to meet in workshop session on December the fourteenth.
And I don't know if as a council, we may have done this, given our condolences to Daring Gore on the passing of his father, and to our attorney, Adam Tucker, on the passing of your father, and is it Brenda?
Brenda.
Brenda Davis on the passing of her husband.
Yeah.
Our condolences are with all of you.
Tomorrow night is lighting the Christmas tree on a brighter note, come downtown and light the Christmas tree on our downtown.
Adam, I'd like to ask if you would, we've had a lot of discussion over the last two public comments, I think based on a lot of the comments, and clearly this decision is a city manager decision, I think it would be good for us as a council to talk about a resolution from the council regarding some of the comments that we've, we've all received. So what I would like to ask is that, I'm trying to think of a, I don't think the council, and I'm not speaking for anyone else, just me, I don't think anyone on the council listening to all the comments and the emails that we've gotten wants to preclude any organization from meeting at facilities inside our city. But I do think that a line is drawn when kids are present, and that we need a resolution of some sort from you guys to consider what that is. And I know we have that in our code, and I don't know if that's us discussing and going back over our code publicly that we talk about that, but I think the council, you know, we had a hundred and fifty people here tonight, and that we're, I totally find that the city manager makes those decisions, and I think the council understands that that's part of our government, that that role is with city staff on many things, but as a, as a council, we need to discuss what those standards inside our Parks and Recreation facilities are. I don't know if that needs to go to Parks and Recreation first, or if that comes to the council, but we need to discuss some kind of resolution that comes from this body on where we are.
We can, we can work on that, I may, I'll get with staff, and I may need to have individual meetings or conversations with council members to get some input in terms of what is the will of council in that regard.
I think, and if, you know, if that resolution comes and we discuss that publicly on, on where we are, then I think that's, that's, I think that's fine. I, I, you know, I don't think any council member up here wants to duck behind, we've all been responding to emails, and we're not going to duck behind a decision that Craig, the city manager makes, we have to stand up and say this is what, as a council, we think, but we're going to leave that to you to be able to talk to individual council members and, and us bring that together.
Sure. Does that sound fair?
Sounds fair.
Yes.
One, one more thing, the drive-through Christmas lights at Kennisboro go from the second to eighteenth, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just say I agree with what you just said, and I'll go on record and say I publicly support Mr. Tindall's decision, and I'll leave it at that.
All right, council members, we are meeting next Thursday?
Correct.
I think that will be our last meeting probably of the year.
You'll have a special, you'll have a workshop the following Wednesday.
I was just wishing that it.
I mean, I'm sorry. I'm fine if we don't meet.
Okay.
Let's vote on it, no meeting, make a motion.
All right, any other business from council or staff? All right, seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.